Come up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Julian Steinberg, I own the house at 29 South Fifth Avenue. I also received one of the letters regarding the sidewalk. I had just inherited the house from my mom. Since I don't live in the house, the letter was left in the mailbox, which I found interesting because I already transferred over the house. So I called and the lovely code enforcement guy hung up on me when I was trying to find out about this stuff. So I actually had to call the administrator to get a little bit more information. Okay, I'm sorry. I was trying to find out what sidewalk was broken. At the same time, I was switching insurance companies because she said it was a safety issue. So when I was trying to get some other stuff done that the insurance company wanted to know about, I asked Mason guys who were coming over to find out what sidewalk was broken. I had three Mason guys could not figure out what part of my front sidewalk was messed up. Now, they were going to make money. Three guys could not figure out anything wrong with my front sidewalk. Scott, the Mason, your code enforcement guy, went and called back. I had my husband call. Finally, we got a hold of him. We asked him to please mark the sidewalk. He said they were out of the paint to mark the sidewalk. And then he said only one person had the list to mark. He had more excuses. Finally, we got it marked. We showed one of the guys who was going to possibly do some other work. He could not believe what they were marking. And then he pointed out to me, the Mason guy, if my insurance company found nothing wrong with my front sidewalk, boo, they would have found something wrong because they were insuring the house. What was Highland Park's problem about it? So if you're talking about a safety issue, my insurance company was finding nothing wrong with the sidewalk. But you guys did feel that it was the tree and it was your town tree, so you're willing to grind the roots. So they came in to ground the roots and you were paying for that. I didn't ask for the tree there, neither did my mom, but you were grinding the roots. If the tree caused the damage, you should have also been paying for that sidewalk to be fixed as well. Okay? Because that was also the problem. It lifted it, so you had to grind the roots. You should be paying for the sidewalk that I had to replace. Because the one thing wouldn't have happened if it wasn't the other. All right? So if you want to play fair, I fixed the sidewalk, but you should pay for it all. I mean, it looks like a mess because you have different colored sidewalks, but that's what you want. It's all flat. It's nice. Nobody will fall. But as far as safety, the insurance company found nothing wrong with it, but now everybody can walk nice and pretty.
Please. What I'm going to do after this comment is I'm going to stop. Please come up. I'm going to stop public comment. We'll do our business and then we'll have another public comment session. Okay?
Yes, hi. Lawrence Rosenfeld, 147 Exodus Street. And this is about the sidewalk issue. In July, I sent an email to the mayor and the members of the Borough Council stating my position on the sidewalk issues. I questioned the need for such an extensive program. I pointed out the cost burden to residents who already pay high borough taxes, and I alluded to the environment and safety issues. Right now, I just want to focus on an issue that affects me and probably others as well. The mayor's first letter indicated that if a sidewalk is deemed unsafe... I thought I was. Hello? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I hear myself now, so, okay. Right now, I just want to focus on an issue that affects me and probably others as well. The mayor's first letter indicated that if a sidewalk is deemed unsafe, a new sidewalk must be installed and that leveling sidewalk is not permitted. I couldn't find anything contradicting that in the second letter. And in real honesty, I'm quoting from an email that makes reference to that letter since I don't have that letter and I couldn't find it on the Borough's website. Now, there's a letter from the Director of Code Enforcement dated May 29th that state sidewalks may be lifted and reset. In our situation, we have a slab that's marked, that was marked up, that's relatively new, but where one side is slightly higher than the adjacent slab. This is probably due to the roots emanating from the township's tree by the curb. Now, we have a copy of an invoice from a tree consultant contracted by the Borough to determine if root grinding was indicated. The invoice stated that no root grinding was needed and that one slab can be, the term we use it was jack-plated, up to the needed level. Now, my wife called some people at the Borough about this, but she was unable to get a definitive answer. So in this case, sidewalk replacement, as required by the mayor's first letter, may be unnecessary and needlessly expensive. So I guess my question is, can the, is it possible that a slab can be repositioned so that there's no gap between the two slabs or does it have to be replaced? Anybody?
Yes, it can be reset.
Okay.
You know, again, without knowing the exact details of your sidewalk, but in principle, if it can come up in one piece and be leveled and put down in one piece, then yes. And I defer to the code enforcement people, but yes, that is possible.
Okay, because as I said in the second letter, there was no contradiction of that statement that was in the first letter, so that was the question.
Yeah, we have a lot of work to make sure everyone clearly understands what is required.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to close public comment for now because we have other business we must do and then I'm going to reopen the floor for public comment. So that's what we're going to do right now. Okay. Clerk, can you report on the introduction of a lease ordinance for the capital equipment and improvement and financing program of the NCI for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, Approving and Authorizing the Entering into Execution and Delivery of a Lease and Agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority Relating to the Issuance of County-Guaranteed Capital Equipment and Improvement Revenue Bonds," Series 2012 of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, can you report on the introduction of the loan ordinance for the capital equipment and improvement and financing program of the NCI for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, Approving and Authorizing the Entering into Execution and Delivery of a Loan and Security Agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority for the Undertaking of Various 2012 Capital Improvements and the Acquisition and Installation, as applicable, of Various Equipment with an Estimated Cost of $275,000. The cost of such improvements and equipment to be financed through the issuance of county-guaranteed capital equipment and improvement bonds, Series 2012 of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title."
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, can the clerk report on the introduction of an ordinance for intersection improvements at Woodbridge Avenue and Du Close Lane for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Approving the Intersection Improvements for Woodbridge Avenue and Du Close Lane in the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title."
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt? Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay. Can you report on the introduction of a traffic ordinance amendment, one-way street for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance entitled "An Ordinance to Amend and Supplement the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 7 Traffic, has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title."
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is for the area in front of the police and fire station.
Yes, in fact, it's...
My concern is, has the police, the fire department responded with any concerns about not being able to go in either direction when they leave the department?
They would be able to tell them where to see you.
So they don't have to pay?
And they know about this, yes.
Okay. So I was going to ask for a motion to adopt and then I was going to ask after the roll call vote for a very brief synopsis, either from the administrator or from the chief. But why don't we do the motion first and then the vote?
The motion's on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion's on the floor. I apologize. Okay, so roll call.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, either Chief, Chief Bisco or the Borough Administrator, can one of you just give us a very brief synopsis of what we just did?
Sure, Mayor. What we were, as you know, we're going to be constructing a new police building. There's going to be a lot of construction going on and there's going to be a need for parking and safety for kids going to Bartles School. What we are proposing is that between Benner and Mansfield during construction period become a one-way...
South?
Yes. South. This will allow parking on that street for court days, additional residents when they come pay their bills. Also, we're going to, additionally, we're going to have more crossing guards on. We're going to have the kids cross at Benner on the, to the, for a whole side of the street, walk down, and we'll have a couple crossing guards there to make sure that they stay on the sidewalk and to cross to go over to Bartles School. We feel this will make it safer for the kids and give us additional parking.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And what I would just say about that is the introduction is the first step in this process. There's going to be extensive outreach right here in this neighborhood and certainly beyond over the next several weeks. This is being done in coordination with the superintendent and the administration over at the school so that this will not in any way, shape, or form be a secret. We plan to publicize this, make it known, and educate people so that everybody is safe when school starts and beyond. Okay, the consent agenda. I, okay, I think we need a motion to separate one of the items?
Two of the items.
Two of the items.
Two thirty-four and two forty-two.
Motion to separate?
Second.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
It's two forty-two?
Right, and two thirty-four.
And two thirty-six. I vote the resolution, salary resolution.
All right, not two thirty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so we have a motion to separate two thirty-six and two forty-two?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to request that we reintroduce the motion for two thirty-two, separate two thirty-six and two forty-two. So can somebody give me a new motion? Well, wait one second. Do we withdraw the motion first or no?
No, you can...
Okay, so I'm just going to, we're going to, we'll have a new motion, so it's for separation of two thirty-six and two forty-two. Motion?
Second.
Okay. All right, so the items on the consent agenda now are eight twelve two thirty-four, resolution to approve bills list, eight twelve two thirty-five, resolution to authorize refund of duplicate tax payment, eight twelve two thirty-seven, resolution to approve pay estimate number ten to Conquest Industries LLC, eight twelve two thirty-eight, resolution to approve taxi operator licenses, eight twelve two thirty-nine, resolution to authorize release of the maintenance bond for Y-Rong new miner's site plan, eight twelve two forty, resolution to authorize execution of renewal agreement with Colgate Paper Stock Company Incorporated, eight twelve two forty-one, resolution to approve pay estimate number three, Helios Construction, Inc., resolution eight twelve two, I'm sorry, eight twelve two forty-three, resolution to authorize final payout to Glenn Sebo, Jr., eight twelve two forty-four, resolution to approve shared services agreement with the Housing Authority, eight twelve two forty-five, resolution to authorize lease of postage machine, eight twelve two forty-six, resolution to authorize submission of community concerns grant 2012, eight twelve two forty-seven, resolution to authorize repairs to the roof of the library. All right, so can I have a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion for eight twelve two thirty-four, resolution to approve bills list?
No, two thirty-six.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Let's do that again. Can I have a motion to approve resolution to amend annual salary resolution, eight twelve two thirty-six?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Epstein.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, now can I have a motion to adopt eight twelve two forty-two, resolution to approve Raffa license HP Conservative Temple? Motion?
Second.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Epstein.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, can you report the election of volunteer firefighter Andrew Campbell? Did we, did we elect volunteer firefighter Andrew Campbell?
I think he just needs to be approved.
Okay, so then we need a motion to confirm.
Right. Motion to confirm.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, we have an open item on the agenda. Are we acting on that? Okay, so I need a motion to approve resolution eight twelve two forty-eight, resolution to approve sponsorship of live charity kickball game. Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walkovitz?
Yes.
Okay, now I would like to reopen the floor for public comment. Why don't we do Mr. Pigeonson and then Lois will have you, okay? Luke?
Thanks, Mayor. Luke Pigeonson, 200 Jackson Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. Ed, I just want to follow up and ask you some, if you could elaborate a bit on the process. As some of my neighbors have pointed out, we're always kind of have questions about process because this is such a difficult process to begin with. Okay, with regards specifically to American Properties, at one point, we were really concerned, or some of us were really concerned, that Judge Paley's impending retirement was going to be a factor in unduly expediting the, the what? The negotiation, excuse me. Is that still the case? Do we feel that Paley's retirement, is that still on for September 15th and how do we, how do we assess that impact?
As far as I know, the judge is still planning to retire. It's had no impact whatsoever on our discussions.
That's good to hear. Are we scheduled to meet? Do we have a, do we have a scheduled meeting with American Properties at this point?
We do not.
Thank you. Again, to process, but to the River Road property, the front parcel, you mentioned that we're still in the process of, and at least I understood it, Ed, that we're still in the process of the interim settlement or the interim agreement. At what point, what are the steps from, from right now on?
Well, we're currently under the interim settlement agreement. That was approved back in May. Now, the next steps are to move on to a final settlement agreement. That's what we're working on. And that calls for the concept plan, I believe, a copy of which has been shared with you.
Indeed, thank you.
It also calls for an ordinance which would be put in the code book which would implement this type of development. So those are the documents that are being worked on. The final settlement agreement, concept plan is done and the ordinance is drafted, but now it's a matter of fine tuning the ordinance to make sure it does what we anticipate it should do.
And once those two documents have been successfully initiated, we will then return to Judge Paley's court?
No, we would come back to the council first.
Okay.
Just like we did with the interim settlement agreement.
Okay.
One evening, it was on the agenda, so it'll be put on the agenda. We would outline what that final settlement agreement is, public can comment upon that, and then if it was acceptable to counsel, they would vote on it in open session and then they would introduce the ordinance. And then we go back to the judge after everything is adopted.
Okay. Do you, could you offer a guess as to when that might occur?
Well, we're very close to the final document, so it should occur in the very near future, but I don't know exactly when.
Sixty days?
Oh, sooner than that.
Thank you. And at that point, we will, the developer will then go to the planning board after, and how does that relate to the process? In other words, once we go back to court and Judge Paley's process or whoever's sitting at that point says yea to our settlement, then the developer will then come to the planning board?
They would file an application with the planning board for site plan approval, in other words, to get the project approved. And then we have a period of time to deem it complete. After we deem it complete, it would be scheduled before the planning board with public notice, and then there would be just a standard planning board process which would involve public testimony, traffic experts, environmental experts, planning experts, you know, the normal development activity, and then people will be given an opportunity to question and present testimony, and then the planning board would make a decision.
And at that point, the, the laws, how to say, the jurisdiction, the aegis of the process is no longer within the confines of the court?
Well, if the development application, let's say it's approved, and then there's a period of time within which you can challenge that, but I would say after that forty-five day period, then the lawsuit would be dismissed.
And I guess at that point, if, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I promised Lois that she could go next and we'll work our way back around the room.
All right, thank you. Lois Lebbing, North Second Avenue. Before I get to the S letters, I would like to, would have liked to ask the Main Street man, but I believe he left, when will the Main Street Highland Park office become accessible to people with disabilities and the discrimination?
Lois, as you heard us say before, we've just all transferred roles on council and I've now, I'm now working with Main Street. I will get you an answer.
I mean, you understand that that building?
Absolutely. I was working with Universal Access on this and I am committed to making it happen.
Other, other stores in town too? At least have signage or notice that there's a ramp available?
We can talk about all of that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, second question, the streetscapes. There are blueberries next to Rite Aid. Are they actual blueberries edible as they look? They're in full bloom, it's time, it has the right leaves. Does anyone know?
No.
Next to Rite Aid in the rain gardens, they are blueberries in bloom. Now, I'll take a handful, maybe you planted them there just for me.
Try them and let us know what happens. No, you know, I'll follow up. Lois, that's very gracious of you. The short answer is, we do not know that, to tell you that they are or are not blueberries.
Who planted the?
It was part of the project. There was a list of plants, but I don't have the list of plants in my head.
Would the clerk's office have them on the plants?
It could probably be, you know, ascertain rather quickly from the plants, yes.
It sure looks like real-life blueberries to me.
Well...
Well, Scott, Scott wouldn't, wouldn't ever poison me.
Ouch.
Okay, so we'll find out about the blueberries.
Somebody in the back, I'm sorry, somebody in the back said they don't taste like blueberries, they're not blueberries, yeah.
They don't taste like they're not, you know, I have a blueberry bush, this doesn't taste like it.
Maybe they're not fully ripe?
Okay, that's helpful to know.
They sure look, she tried them.
Lois, feel cautioned.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. I heard Councilman Potts talk about activities for youth and I think seniors. What is available for developmentally disabled people who are adults in town, might read, might not read, might be functioning at a seven-year-old level, but could carry on a conversation? There's never been anything available ever.
As you probably know, I was newly appointed to the council, so I'm kind of getting acclimated to the position and the different departments. I don't know if there's anyone else here who's been on council longer than I have.
Can I jump into that a little bit? For the, over the years, there've been many programs that have been developed. In our senior center currently, if we have anyone in town that's an adult, the senior center is mostly geared for fifty-five and over, but we have people that have challenges that can go to the senior centers, and we have a number of persons who are not fifty-five that participate in the daily programs at the senior centers. Yes, it's very inclusive that it would include persons like those. A number of years ago, Buddy Ball was instituted and we work with the Buddy Ball teams to get this done. In the summer camp, there are programs in the summer camp that's very inclusive of everyone. During the summertime, anyone, any children with disabilities can participate in the program, and I know currently there are children with disabilities in the program at the summer camp. I don't know why, but I'm bouncing off the wall.
What is Buddy Ball? Is it a baseball?
It's, it's sports activities for persons with challenges, for young people with mentally delayed or physical challenges, if they have a disability. It's for persons with disability that we have young kids that go out and play their buddies. The partnership with someone, that person becomes their buddy, or two kids become their buddy, and they'll show them how to play basketball, how to play kickball, soccer, or what have you. So it's a way for us to engage in that. Program is run on Saturdays, a way for the persons with disability to engage in activities that we have a sports program, so to speak, here.
But they don't like sports.
And if I may also add, may I?
Uh huh.
Also, through Universal Access, also through Universal Access, and I've been at some of those meetings before, Ms. Lebbing, we've, we're working on some programs for adults. We've been, we were investigating a theater arts program, so we're trying to work with some funds that we have and try to develop something like that, which I believe would include the demographic that you're referring to.
I think these are people who are more interested in making an interesting craft, maybe nicer than beadwork. I think you're higher, working with higher functioning people, but I'm going to move on.
Can, may I encourage you to come to, bring it up to any Universal Access meeting?
Oh, I meant to come there last month, but I mowed the lawn because I couldn't find the date. date.
And Lois, if you know some of those persons, they're always welcome to come to the senior center. It's open from eight until four, well, in the summertime it's eight until five, and they can engage in activities, and there's many, many activities there that they can engage in.
They would never think that. I mean, if there's nothing in writing, they would never, their parents, they would never know to go to the senior building. They'd go occasionally to the cave, or had been going, but someone was trying to, anyhow.
Well, I, you've identified an important opportunity, both for programming and outreach, so we're gonna pursue that.
Thank you, okay. The roof repair. We just, once, twenty years ago, or maybe less, the high school had, still had a warranty for a twenty- or twenty-five-year roof. And when that was a big brouhaha, if you all remember, the high school roof had to be redone because there was photos in the paper of puddles in the, on the whatever room, classrooms.
I wasn't here then.
The company president got back and said, "Why didn't anyone contact me? What are you doing ruining my reputation? We had a warranty. Call me." No one called. So my question is about the library. The library, was this rebuilt in ninety-four, ninety-two? Is there still a warranty if it's not twenty years yet? I just don't have to answer that. Think about it.
I can bring that up with the library, thank you.
What's that?
I can bring that up with the library, thank you, that took a point.
Just pull out the warranty. Okay, now I guess we're up to the S word. In July?
Excuse me.
Which S word? Sidewalk.
You'll get another opportunity. We're gonna let Ms. Lebing finish.
No, that's not written in.
Well, it's, it's technically, it's technically, excuse me, it's technically five minutes per person, so, and the council has much business to do after this meeting, so please be mindful. Go ahead, yes.
Okay. In your letter, last month I had asked in the, our main attorney was not here, what Highland Park case was not, it wasn't cited in your letter that went up to, the sidewalk case went up to the New Jersey Supreme Court, says the fifth paragraph of Mayor Minkoff's letter.
Okay, main attorney, would you please correct me and respond to Lois?
That was a misstatement in the letter. There is no case from Highland Park that went to the New Jersey Supreme Court. There is a case, I believe you're aware of it, that went to the New Jersey Superior Court Law Division in New Brunswick, which upheld our ordinance.
Yes, I am a sidewalk criminal. I admit it. I steal sidewalks. Okay, in the last bit, you are now quoting, if I'm correct, in your new sidewalk ordinance amendment, NJSA forty, colon, sixty-five dash fourteen, that enormous paragraph that talks about everybody has to repair their sidewalks. But I'm saying you didn't read the historical notes or the cross-references or the law review or the references, library references. But anyhow, it has two case laws in paper. Librarians, two librarians and an intern working at Middlesex County College could not find on the computer any of the updates. So if this is actually photocopied from Borough Hall own book, unfortunately, the page numbers are off. But here's fourteen, this is the section that you guys quoted. There's two case laws. One talks about public sidewalks abutting, anything on the sidewalk to impede safe passage, cause a pedestrian to fall, injure, exists, blah, 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 had to be cleaned up. Fillmore Corporation, corporation. Right next to it, from your paperwork, and it's still the same paperwork in the update pocket part in a real book, not on the computer, says nineteen seventy-five, "In New Jersey generally, abutting landowner has no duty to remove natural accumulation of ice and snow from public sidewalk adjoining his premises," comma, "nor does he have obligation to maintain that sidewalk, for he is not responsible for defects caused by elements of wear and tear incident to public use." Supreme Court of New Jersey, nineteen seventy-five, still in twenty-twelve dash twenty-thirteen, this year and next year's pocket update, Davis versus Peccorino, sixty-nine, NJ, page one. But even forgetting that for a minute, if you go to the sidewalk chapter, and instead of starting in the middle at fourteen, NJSA forty, sixty-five dash fourteen, the paragraph that you guys keep quoting, if you start at number one, section one, instead of dash fourteen, forty, sixty-five dash one, "Ordinance is for cost," semicolon, "conformance to grade," semicolon, "exception." Your book and all the other books have the word "exception." And in that fairly large paragraph, the word "exception" doesn't show up. So my question to you is, what is that word "exception" talking about? And I'll just end with saying, when I go to the pocket part update, which is not in the computers, nowhere, it's in a book. Currently, it talks about residential exception applies to owner occupants whose residency, not rental, they're not in Florida, they're here, is established to be predominant use. It's a little longer than that. Residential exception to rule making abutting landowners liable for pedestrian injury, it doesn't say injury, sustained by reason of poor condition of sidewalk, applies to the residential exception, applies to owner occupants. Anyhow, it's the Avalon case, I mentioned it a million times, bouncing back and forth between Highland Park Municipal Court and Superior Court. So I hope, though, somebody can answer that. What does that exception, in the beginning of this sidewalk chapter called sidewalks, sidewalks, number one, not starting in the middle at fourteen, where Stewart kicks in, could that be maybe next month?
Well, I could certainly read what you've quoted, I don't have it in front of me. It wouldn't change my opinion, however, that the borough of Highland Park has a perfectly valid local law that requires folks to repair their sidewalks.
All folks, no exception.
It requires people that have sidewalks in the borough of Highland Park to keep them in good repair. So what we have done is we've used the local law, which is completely enforceable under the state law, to require people to fix their sidewalks. Nothing to do with liability, we had no comment on that, our ordinance doesn't comment on liability. Between commercial and residential, there's a whole book you can read on that. But all our ordinance says is, you're responsible for taking care of the sidewalk, which abuts your property, and when you don't, we can tell you to do so and give you a period of time to do that. And that's what we've done. So what you've just quoted wouldn't change, I'll be happy to read it, but it won't change my opinion. What we have is perfectly legal. I believe that's what the judge told you across the river.
Oh, yes, oh, she did. And then she left her law division after, how many years? Ten years, Judge Stoltz disappeared. Yes, she was forced to say that. Yes. Read the transcript.
Okay. There was, we'll get, hang on, okay, okay, yeah, there was some hands over here. So you'll, I'm gonna let everybody else go, then I'm gonna hear from you again, just in fairness to everybody. Yes, please, come up, sir? Would you, yes, please.
You bypassed me before, I have a hand up. I'd like to speak just to-
Oh, I'm sorry, we need your name and address for the record.
My name's Hope Groves, and I live in, at Adelaide Avenue Apartments. Concerning the letters that went out to the homeowners, now, I am not a homeowner. I live in an apartment, I live at Adelaide Gardens. Now, if these letters went out, telling all the homeowners to fix their sidewalk, Mr. Mayor, I listened to your council member reciting the law. If these letters went out directing the homeowners to fix their sidewalk-
Property owner may be a more accurate.
Property owners. Why believe that Highland Park bypassed the apartments? Meaning, their sidewalks are so deplorable, their roads are so deplorable, people have fallen over the years. What does Highland Park expect to do with all the apartments? Now, you can take a walking tour of what I'm saying, not only the Adelaide Gardens, but all the apartments, and take a look at the sidewalks. Now, if you weren't asking about the property owners to fix their sidewalk, why aren't you doing something with the apartments?
I think, well, actually, I believe that we are. That's why I corrected or clarified what you said with property owners. In fact, I've already seen, I think I can say this, I've seen several property managers already begin the process of repairing various sidewalks. So when we said townwide inspection, it meant townwide, meaning that it included commercial, residential, multifamily, as well as single-family. So it was, so I think it's more accurate to say, we've been using the term homeowner, but I think it's more accurate to say property owner, meaning that it would include multifamily dwellings like apartment complexes. So they, so as far as I know, they have also received where appropriate, they've been inspected, and where necessary, they've, they've been given instructions, guidance, et cetera, to either begin repair or whatever other mechanism we're going to use, you know, whether it's, you know, there are various ways they can go about doing that.
Well, listening to you, sir, this order has been neglected, and it's been abused, and I would like Highland Park to find out why all these apartments, why they're not abiding by the law that you put down, your council members put down. If you're gonna go after the property owners by sending them letters without giving them the chance, before these letters went out, Highland Park should have sent a letter to all the homeowners to be here to express their views. They did not. They just went out, I wrote the letter, and again, I say, I'm not a homeowner. But my main concern is, why Highland Park is neglecting all the apartments right now, they're at Adelaide Gardens, sidewalks, roads are the most deplorable that anyone can imagine. And I, I would like all these council members to take a walking tour, I will leisure, to go down and see exactly what I'm talking about. But I haven't seen any council members down here. Now, the, excuse me, now, the other day, I was walking down on Cedar Avenue, right, right down nearby Raritan Avenue is the gas station. And as I was walking down, and this is the truth, as I was walking down Cedar Avenue, a young lady fell on a sidewalk. Well, naturally, I did exactly what anyone would do, I ran down to help her. And she got up and she said she was okay. And she walked away. Well, I walked into the gas station, and I asked the gentleman down there, I said, "Do you remember the sidewalk out there?" He said, "No." I said, "Well, who owns it?" He says, "I don't know." And this is another thing I would like the council members to go down and take a look. The sidewalk, believe me, Mr. Mayor, is about that far up, that's why, that's why the young lady fell. Now, if the gas station, my lord, and there's no room there, well, then Highland Park must own it.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say that's true. What I would say is that there's, as is the case with a number of the fueling stations in town, there's a third-party landlord that owns that property. And I would imagine that if they were cited, and I can't speak specifically to a particular property, but if they were cited, then that notification would have gone to that landlord.
Well, I'm not sure-
Is that an accurate statement? That the head nod tells me that I'm correct, which means, A, there's a third-party landlord, it's not the gas station itself, there's a separate owner of the property, and that if there was a violation, or what was identified as a violation, then in writing, that landlord would have received that notice.
Well, there's no home there.
I understand, that's why I use the word property. I use a more generic term to include commercial, multifamily, residential, like apartments, and single-family homes. That's why I said property owner. The landlord is the property owner, not the homeowner in this instance.
Well, not the whole, the audience up here, I would like the council members, yourself, to go down to all these different apartment houses, starting with Adelaide Gardens where I live, and take a look at this deplorable situation. If you go look at the homeowners, the property owners, well, how about all these apartment houses? They're living in Highland Park, following the law, the same as-
Yes, they do.
The same as a homeowner or anyone else.
Yes, they do. I agree. And I, on one of my various walks around town, I will pay some of these places a visit, just to see the conditions that you described. I do a fair amount of walking in town, and I'm going to see if I can expand my roots and diversify my roots even a little bit further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, there were some people back here that had, all right, I think this woman had her hand up first, if that's okay, and then this gentleman?
Hi, Joyce Leslie, 501 South First. I'm here to say just a few words about this 7-Eleven that I know is supposed to be coming to South Second and Raritan. And I realize that we don't have complete control over what businesses come, and I realize that we also have had an empty spot for a very long time. But I think there's something you all have to think about. We have a thriving 7-Eleven-type business for many, many years on South Second Avenue, a community-based business with relationships in the community that supplies all kinds of organizations with special things. And just the thought, not even the reality of, but just the thought of putting a competing business exactly in the same spot on that corner generates a tremendous amount of bad feeling. So there's one thing I think everybody in this town, particularly our town leaders, you really have to consider that. And second of all, if our goal is to have a business in each spot, to simply bring in a new one and displace an old one does not achieve that. So I don't see that we would be achieving anything, we would be pretending to achieve something. So I urge everybody here to really consider what we'd be doing by bringing in this competing business and sticking it exactly next to an established town business. Thanks.
Joyce, thank you. I just want to point out that while we appreciate your sentiments, what's essential is that people who have feelings on any side of this issue go to the planning board, the next meeting, I think, is this Thursday night, because they have jurisdiction right now. And so the reason the governing body's not commenting on that publicly is because we don't want to interfere with the quasi-judicial process. So we appreciate you coming and voicing that concern here. It's important that it be on the record there.
Absolutely, I intend to do that. And I didn't ask you a question because I understand that, but I also think as leaders in this town, as people who care about what happens here, I think you also have input. So I'm here to influence you as well.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please.
Hi, I'm Mike Briden, 111 South Sixth. Just a couple of questions, a clarification about the sidewalk thing. Did I understand that if there is a little space, that leveling, if it can be done, that, at least in the abstract, that's a legitimate thing?
Yes. If, I would say, the, what I mean, I think, and again, each case would be different, but if the slab, we'll call it that, can be lifted without broken and set up in a way that the gap between this, the next adjacent one is maintained, and that it flows, and as long as processes are done, then a new, let's say, sidewalk would not have to be poured in that section. But without looking at it, I can't say that you can do that there, but yes, as you said, in the abstract, it is possible.
Yeah, okay.
I think what, just to correct, some people were talking about, what is difficult to do, and as somebody's been in the construction field for a long time, if you have, let's say, gaps like this, it is very difficult to put a leveling compound or leveling concrete on top of that slab to make it happen, because yes, it may work for one year, two years, but by the time five years rolls around, you'll be shoveling that up with the snow. And that's why we don't want to see that type of, let's say, repairs being done. And one thing I want to bring out, and it has been brought up, is the township is offering a program. If you so desire and have gotten one of those letters, you can join a program in which everyone in the program collectively goes out and we work through a vendor, and they'll give us a, kind of like a bulk rate on the sidewalk repairs, and your portion of this repair would then be, you know, assessed, and then you would have five years without any interest to pay it off. So it's not as if, you know, we're simply, you know, throwing out this fiat, we've also provided a mechanism for those, let's say, who, you know, cannot afford, you know, can't take the hit right away, can't pay the mason twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollars, you know, upfront or whatever, but, you know, giving them an opportunity over five years to pay it off. So I just wanted to bring that up because that hadn't been mentioned, but please, go on.
And just to understand, with this idea of leveling, is that generally a process where you put something under the slab and lift it, or you put something on top? Or it could go either way?
No, my understanding would be that the slab itself would be taken up, whatever had to be done to bring it level would be done underneath it, and the slab would then be put on top of it.
That's a scenario. Another scenario could be, could be potentially having it ground. I've seen some legitimate repairs where, I guess it's like a grindstone of sorts, you know, looks like a sander for concrete, and you can actually grind down a raised piece of concrete that way. So, and I'm led to believe that there are circumstances under which that could be acceptable too. So there could be multiple ways to get to that level, level effect. So there could be multiple ways to get to that level, level effect.
The other question is, if the slab essentially is still flat, but you've got a crack here in it, I was told you had to replace the slab. Is that true, or is it possible just to patch in the crack, and the whole surface is then level?
Well, I would defer, I think, you know, again, I would defer to our code enforcement official, but again, we are looking at having repairs that are, in some sense, long-lasting. And you can, and I've done this, and actually, I'm a member, I'm gonna be part of the sidewalk repair, because when I had some work done on my house, the contract, you know, the, you know, the sidewalk got broken, and I did some patching, it held up for a while, but now it's coming, you know, and so now this is an opportunity for me, and I don't have a lot of money, that I can get my sidewalks replaced, pay it off in five years. So one of the reasons, and again, I would defer, and it would depend, and there is some interpretation, but if you have a crack, and, you know, you can, it, it will eventually leak, whatever water seeps down, freeze-thaw, and it will deteriorate the sidewalk. You really want to have a, you know, a new surface, and that will last. And that's really our objective here, and that's, and it's also our objective to have a program in which people can, you know, kind of balance out or level out the, the cost of the, the work required.
And I'm just gonna add one, one more thing to what Councilman Malais said, which is that from the perspective of the program, before you actually formally enroll, the code enforcement director, the borough engineer, borough engineers representative, will visit each one of the homes, and they'll basically review with you what specifically needs to be done. So if it turns out, there could be a situation in which, you know, somebody re-inspects and says, you know what, this is safe for a couple of years, you're okay, that's a possibility, I don't want to promise that, it's a possibility. Another possibility is they say, originally you needed three slabs done, you found a way to grind one, there's two that really need to be replaced, whatever the case might be, you'll know in advance, if, if you choose to join the sidewalk improvement program, and there is a misconception, none of the, none of the people that are, none of the masons that are out doing this work now, notwithstanding our adjournment to the contrary, is representing the borough. They're all independent contractors, they have nothing to do with us. You know, I've said that in writing, and I repeat it tonight, we have nothing to do with them, notwithstanding some claims and representations they've made to the contrary, and we've had dialogues with them, in some cases notified them in writing to stop misleading the public. Okay? But in essence, what, what I wanted to say was that, so you'll know in advance what the cost would be, if you elect to go into the program, and then you can make a determination, is that a better deal than what a private contractor would offer? I mean, candidly, for years, anybody that's ever tried to fix one slab of concrete knows that until recently, because of the economy, you could never find a mason independently, because they were too busy and they cost too much money. Now, with the depressed economy, it would appear that they're willing to compete aggressively for the work, even for individual slabs, four-by-four, five-by-five squares of concrete. So hopefully, there are a number of different possibilities that people can pursue, we have no vested interest, other than sidewalk safety. Others may disagree, that's the vested interest. And candidly, there are plenty of people around town that, whatever, notwithstanding the frustrations that I'm hearing, and I get that, and I'm sympathetic to that, who's not here tonight? There are tons of people in town that are just as upset about the fact that they can't walk safely around the borough, that they feel that it's safer to walk in the streets. And I might say, since somebody said to me, well, what are you doing about the streets? This I will say, we have a regular program at which we review, I'd say yearly, Borough Administrator Kovak, correct me, right? We've got three former Public Works Chairs on, on the days now, four actually. So we review our own infrastructure on a regular basis, and we bond and we seek grants on a regular basis to repave what our own infrastructure is. We're aware that there are certain borough assets that have some issues, and we're dealing with those too. So my point is that it's not, nobody was targeted here, this was a townwide inspection, but then, I'm not saying that you suggested this, the objective is really safety-driven. It's a function of the fact that there are plenty of people, notwithstanding what I said with all the police here about how safe we feel, the irony is, there are plenty of people that, you know, literally come to me in tears at various points in time, saying, I'm afraid to go out, because I can't walk on the sidewalk at night, because it's not safe, and I don't want to walk in the street, because I'm afraid I'll get hit, but I'd rather walk in the street than walk on the sidewalk. I just feel like there's something out of balance there. It's not to create an onerous financial burden for a homeowner, that is not the intent. The intent is simply and purely, as a person who lives here in town, walks here in town, shops here in town, et cetera, feels very strongly that that's really what we should be trying to do. I mean, I think that's part of being a good neighbor, notwithstanding everything else, and I'm not here to make any value judgment that's beyond that, that's just my personal opinion. Can I say that, Ed? Is it okay for me to say what I just said? I hope so, because the toothpaste is out of the tube. Well, the toothpaste is out of the tube now, I knew you would say that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to lecture you, I apologize.
So just to make sure I got it right, so if there's a crack-
It would depend on the size of the crack, but if it had been cited by the code official or the inspector that this was unacceptable than this, yes, that crack would be unacceptable. Look, everybody, this is a, it's a difficult process, we're gonna have to work to do a better job at it, but, you know, and if you have, you know, you know, we just, we hope people can be patient, and, you know, you know, with all the various, you know, restraints that we have as far as taxes, and, and we don't have a lot of staff, and it's difficult, and, you know, we could do a better job, but it just, we'll try to work the best we can to make sure that, that no unnecessary burdens are placed upon the public.
And so if a crack has been-
Yes, I would, I would, if the crack has been identified as a problem, it is a problem that must be addressed, and would have to be addressed by the replacement of that slab. That would, that would be my interpretation at this point, but whether then, the, you know, whether that inspection was in fact, you know, you know, correct, I can only assume it was, but it's up to interpretation, so.
And is that appealable to ask for a second viewing?
You can have, you can ask for a second.
You can ask for a second.
You can contact the code enforcement, and he'll come out and he'll look at it with you.
Yeah.
Just to, sure.
And it's gonna take, you know, and one of the things, we don't want people-
This is not to, you know, give you guys our-
I don't, I don't take it that way. And we need to, listen, I'm sorry, bear with me, I just want to say, and if, and it's not to be critical of any of the staff, if we hear that staff is not being responsive, we're not here to criticize, I'm not saying you're not, you know, we as, as governing body members are not here to criticize them, we're here to help them do their job better. We're here to help them and encourage them to be responsive, figure out where communication links may be broken or might have broken down, and, no pun intended, repair them. I mean, that's absolutely what we want to do.
And the last thing, it's not so much a question or anything like that, but just to say, it's been said before, but with the tree situation, you know, which is the town's tree, when that's been the main exacerbating thing, it, it seems a shame to grind the roots, especially if it's gonna mean the tree is so weakened that it has to be taken out, that seems a shame. We feel it, and this is not to say what should or shouldn't be done, it's just to say, you know, we sort of feel it's a shame to lose our-
We have a certified tree expert, and he renders individual opinions on a tree situation basis.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, could, as a point of clarification, could I ask the chairperson of our shade tree committee to speak on that issue?
I noticed that she had her hand up, Karen, did you want to join in very briefly? Karen, just give us your address, please, for the record.
Fifty-five Cleveland Avenue.
This is Karen Swin, she's one of the chairpeople of our-
Grinding is not the only alternative. If it's possible to curve the sidewalk-
Meander.
Into one's property, it's being done, it's been done already two or three times on Cleveland Avenue alone, it looks great, take a look at it, it's a way to completely avoid damaging any of the leaves of the tree. Okay?
We were told by one of these-
The contractors love to make money, and they will grind your tree, and they will not care about the tree. Do not let an ordinary contractor do any root grinding unless you have an arborist look at it first. They will just kill the tree. They don't know anything about trees, they know about concrete.
Okay, so I think we had, I'm sorry, I didn't want to rush you.
Yeah, the other thing is, if it really is the tree, and, and there's no getting around it, I guess-
The tree surgeon would have to render an opinion at that point.
Well, yeah, we have some feeling about, you know, if the town's tree is causing the expense, you know, what's the fair way to kind of handle that particular piece of expense in it? So it's something to think about, something we wonder about, something we consider about. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, please, come up, Ms. Roger, yes, please. Thank, thank you for waiting patiently. And after this, I'm going to close public comment, because we still have two more meetings after this.
First off, I would like to make a statement, I have two friends who own nurseries who say tree grinding kills a tree in five years. And as trees that the township put in, the roots grow out, not down. So if you grind the roots, it's gonna frig up your sidewalks in five years, so you'll be repairing them again. I would like to know what gave the town the authority to enforce these letters that went out to the residents stating that you have to fix your sidewalk. Again, I would like to bring up the fact that, as a homeowner, you have homeowner's insurance, and I'm thinking that what prompted the town to get involved with this debacle with the sidewalks was a lawsuit that ensued by a woman who fell on township property. And I think that the township said, oh crap, where are we gonna get the money to provide this woman with her lawsuit? So I think that the town pushed it on the residents of the town under this, we're gonna pressure you to fix your sidewalks, because you have a right as a resident to have homeowner insurance, which provides you with insurance if someone falls on your property. That is your God-given right as a resident in the United States of America to have homeowner insurance. For a township to force you to fix your sidewalks is, I'm sorry, but again, I will state, part and parcel of Merrill Franks Agenda Twenty-One. High density, who is a developer that is causing the high density in our town? I would like to know their name. Also, I would also like to know, who is the buffoon who put in the rain gullies that are collecting garbage down every main street that is attached to Raritan Street? When I was in third grade, I learned that rain goes straight, it doesn't turn unless you have somebody there twenty-four-seven saying, rain, go this way, rain, go this way. That is a waste of taxpayer money. I did not know that a tree needed a tube to survive in a rain environment. This town has wasted so much of the taxpayer money, and if you tell the people in town that it is part of a federal grant, well, I'm not stupid, I know that that federal grant comes out of every taxpayer's pocket and goes to the municipality, that goes to the county, that goes to the federal government. This is all part of behind the green door. We are not stupid, we are very awake, Mayor. And I would tell you, we will hold each single person on this council and this board liable for everything that you destroy as a freedom that we have been ingrained with as being an American citizen. You are destroying our freedoms. And if you people think that we're gonna sit here, we're gonna take this garbage, I would tell you right now, I've seen people at a council fall asleep because they don't want to hear what's going on from the residents of town. We've had enough, we have had enough, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to ask for a, oh, I'm gonna close public discussion, and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn to our executive session, we have some litigation to discuss. So can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.